Good evening. Welcome to the February 24 regular meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Dewar.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Litteral. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Have a motion.
May I excuse Councilman Litteral?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Litteral. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You'd all please stand. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on individual, with liberty and justice for all.
You'd all remain standing just for a moment. Pray with me. Father, we come before you with gratitude for the blessings of this city, its people, its resources, and the opportunities it provides. Help us to be good stewards of all that you have entrusted to us. May we learn from the past, be mindful of the present, and plan wisely for the future. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that honor the needs of our community and the courage to serve with integrity and compassion. Bless Beaver Creek and all who call it home, that we may work together in harmony and gratitude for the gifts that we have been given. Senior, may I pray? Amen. We have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have some minutes from the February 10, 2025, regular meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the February 10, 2025, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-03.
Ordinance 25-03. An ordinance amending Chapter 158 by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175.
This is the second reading. Is there anything from staff? Any changes? Counsel, anything? Motion?
Move to approve ordinance 25-03.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-03. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Ordinance 25-04. To approve supplemental appropriations and certified revenues for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, and to amend ordinance 24-43.
Mr. Graham.
Good evening. So, we just finally got the budget feels like all done, and now here we are adjusting it already. So, a couple of items on there. The first one, positive thing, we received a $20,000 grant from the Dayton Foundation for age-friendly grants. And so, we're asking that that money be appropriated and certified so that we can start the program and kind of assess our age-friendliness as a city. We are asking for additional appropriations for the Shared Resource Center. That was a company that was hired when there was no finance director. They provided a temporary finance director and a payroll clerk. Due to billing mishap, about $50,000 of that money that was spent in '24 was not paid until 2025. So, we're asking for a total of $80,000. We are in the process. Obviously, we are no longer paying for the finance director, and we are weaning our way away from having the payroll clerk. And so, but we're pretty sure that will get us through the year. The Moverba liability insurance came in about 33% higher than what was budgeted. That was because there were, on the liability side, there was an audit done, and it was determined that Moverba was not setting the reserve account high enough to cover some of those costs, and the reinsurance, as a result, went up. You know, you could look at it and say, well, we saved a lot of money by underreporting liabilities in the past, but obviously, this wasn't planned. The benefit was, is they did close plan years 2016 and 2019, and we received a $154,000 refund for those payments that we'd paid in for that weren't needed. So, you know, it kind of offsets, unfortunately, one's a revenue and one's an expense, so we're looking for additional appropriations to cover. Of course, our favorite one, closing purchase orders. I know Jeff is really fond of this one every time he goes to spend money, and he's like, David, what happened to this purchase order? It's a system problem. We're working with the vendor on it. I just, it's been a problem for years, and I don't know that it's going to go away until the software goes away. So, that's... But we are asking for additional appropriations for those POs that were closed. We're asking that they be reappropriated in 2025 because they were prior-year POs. They don't revert back to anything other than your beginning cash balance, so we ask that those be reappropriated. Spring House Park, obviously, is a grant we received last year. We set up the appropriations and the certification. We received the $1 million, but the only thing that was encumbered during 2024 was the engineering portion of that. So, we're asking for the appropriations for the capital portion, little over, you know, around $800,000 be reappropriated for 2025. And then, the final item is a request for an additional certification for the street capital improvement projects. These are accounts where the money was certified in past years when we applied for and received the grant, but obviously, we don't receive the monies until the programs or projects are completed. So, that left us a little short on the revenue side, and so, we just ask that those 24 revenues that, you know, were certified be certified in '25. Are there any questions?
Well, this is an ordinance, so we will have to open it for public input. So, if there's anyone here that would like to speak to that, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Anything from counsel?
Just a quick point of clarification. On the capital portion of the Spring House Park Fund, is it 800 or 900?
I'm sorry, it's 900,000. I was doing it off the top of my head instead of looking at the paper in front of me.
That's what I said. Hard to do from memory. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Move ordinance 25-04.
It is a single reading, sir. Single reading.
Second reading.
No, single reading. Single reading.
Single reading. All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-04. That's a single reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Roll call.
It is roll call. I'm sorry, this is ordinance. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Okay. Ordinance 25-05.
Ordinance 25-05. An ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Section 97.10, weeds and grass of the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances, and adopting a new Section 97.10, weeds and grass of the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances, and to update regulations concerning yard maintenance and landscaping in the city of Beaver Creek.
Mr. Burkett.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, as the clerk stated, this is a request from staff to update Section 97.10 in our Code of Ordinances. It's this section of the code that covers mainly where, you see in the summary, we put signs out if a grass grows over 10 inches. This is the regulations that covers those ordinances that allow us to, you know, limit grass to 10 inches. But it also covers weeds, and that's been kind of a discussion up in the air over the last nine months or so. Just a little bit of background, again, this is the section of the codes that cover grass and weeds. Now, when it came to landscape beds, landscape areas, you know, in the past, we've used discretion and just had language in there about that you can have landscaping, it just be reasonable. And the problem was reasonable for one person might not be reasonable for another, and when we found some instances that we didn't think were reasonable, our legal counsel's opinion was it would be really challenging to defend reasonable versus non-reasonable in court. So, what we wanted to do is come up with some regulations that add a little bit more clarity, and we really basically did that by adding some definitions and adding a few regulations, and mainly by defining what managed and maintained means from the standpoint of this proposal. Again, there's been properties in the city, and other examples of what some people think is reasonable. You know, we've got all kinds of areas where grass and landscaping would grow out into the right-of-way into the street, and for some people, this is a reasonable amount of landscaping and reasonable growth. And we're trying to balance. We've got one end of the spectrum in the city where they'll mow their lawn every day and out there manicuring it, and one at perfect green and no bugs, and then we got the other side that, you know, wants to go all-natural and just everything as a free-for-all, and we're trying to create regulations that kind of fall in the middle somewhere and that would cover what a majority of the city would think is, you know, regulations that are appropriate for the city of Beaver Creek. So, again, we came up with a definition of what managed and maintained are, and in that definition, it kind of leaves some discretion for the planning director, subject to, if there's some disagreement on that, then it'd be subject to appeals with the BZA. So, you know, we're looking at managed and maintained. You know, these would be considered well-managed, well-maintained yards. Well-managed, well-maintained yards, whereas you get a clear delineation between what is the ground cover or grass, and then what's the landscape area. So, you can see that, you know, these areas, you know, we would definitely consider well-maintained and managed. The language in the proposal states that all vegetation other than lawns and trees need to be in landscape beds, that the total of landscape beds in the front yard can't be more than 50% of the front yard, and I got a few examples of 50% because it's a little bit more than what you would think, but it's of the required front yard. So, if you have a house that sets back 100 feet in a regular, in a normal residential zoning district, the required front yard is the first 40 feet, and then beyond that 40 feet is not part of the required front yard. It's the required yard, but not part of, it's part of the front yard, but not the required front yard. So, it's that first 40 feet or whatever the front yard setback is of that particular zoning district is where you can have, is where you're limited to 50%. Also, landscape beds need to have obvious shapes and edges and provide a clear delineation between what the, between the bed and the rest of the yard. So, if you go back and look, you can see on these, there's a clear distinction. It's not a blurred line. It's not, it could be, it might be part of the landscape bed, it might not. I mean, these are all really distinctive areas that are landscape versus lawn cover portions of the yard. In terms of the rest of the yard for the rear and side yards, landscaping, landscape beds should be set back at least three feet, except if you have a fence along the edge of your property where that fence would prevent vegetation growing into your neighbor's yards, and then you can have that landscaping right up to the fence. Do I have three minutes? And so, if you have that fence, you can have your landscaping right up to the edge of the property line, and the intent there is, when you have a landscaping bed, you know, your landscaping tends to grow outward, and the three feet would help protect vegetation going into the neighbor's yards, or if you have a fence, then that would protect vegetation going into neighbor's yards. That was the intent, it's either-or. And then, again, we offered a fairly detailed version of what we think managed and maintained is, is regularly cultivated weed, pruned, trimmed, tied, or managed, so as to avoid the appearance of neglect in a manner that's not inconsistent with prevailing maintenance. And again, this states that the planning director shall determine what managed and maintained is, and we do that on a case-by-case basis. You know, we're not going out and looking to, you know, stop people from having creative yards and have whatever landscaping that they desire, just we want to see that be clearly delineated and be maintained and managed in an appropriate way. There is obviously the opportunity, if a resident feels that they are managed and maintained, and staff is saying it's not, then the Board of Zoning Appeals can decide, you know, the matter on that. In the code, it says, in the proposed regulations, it says Chapter 158.11, but we need to remove that .11. It's just in Chapter 158 in general. And a few examples of what 50% of the required front lawn is, I mean, I just made these shapes up, so I'm not saying that you have to use those shapes. It's just, I wanted to just see what portion of any given front yard in the city is, in the required front yard, is 50%. And you can see, and that doesn't include the driveways or walkways, those don't calculate into that, but you can see 50% is, I mean, there's a lot of areas in the front lawn for creativity. So, staff's recommending approval of the request, of the ordinance that we've put forward, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is an ordinance, so we will open it up to the public. Anyone would like to speak to this, please come forward. You have, state your name and address. You have three minutes, or you can have up to six minutes donated to you by someone else in the audience.
Okay. My name is Deborah Whitaker. I'm at 1375 Bills Drive. Thank you for taking the time. I want to thank Randy and Matt for the attention to detail they have given to this and listening to our concerns. I did want to kind of point out that I live back where Mayor Hadley lived, so I can come down Lance to go to Haynes, and I can come down Fudge. Just going that way, there's about 45 yards that would not necessarily meet the requirement. That's more right-of-way issues. Some of those are obstructive, however, so I would like that to maybe be dealt with in some fashion. So, but thank you again. I appreciate your efforts for the city, and I hope to work with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Brian Anderson, 3675 Old Willow Drive, would like to donate my time to Debbie Carr.
My name is Debbie Carr. I live at 2889 Lance Road, and I'm a member of the group of native plant gardeners who provided draft language for a managed natural landscape. Again, I'd like to thank Randy Burkett and Matt Funk for meeting with representatives of our group several times, listening to our concerns and providing a draft for review and asking for feedback. And I think the ordinance as presented is much improved, but I still have a couple of concerns. During the January 21 city council work session, Mr. Funk gave a presentation about natural landscapes, and he stated that clarification to the language in the current code would be needed. He also pointed out that both natural and conventional landscapes had to be managed and maintained, and then he said that the right-of-way would have to be maintained, just like a lawn. It's right in the meeting minutes. That's a clear, concise statement. Unfortunately, the ordinance section on this topic, Section D, is not that clear and concise. It's the same vague language as the current code, verbatim, where it says, "The owner, occupant, or person having charge or management of any lot or parcel of land abutting public right-of-way shall be responsible for cutting and/or removing all grass and weeds over 10 inches," and then it goes on and lists the various types of right-of-way. I take it literally. That's just my nature, and as I read it, it only prohibits weeds and grass more than 10 inches in height. And if you go to the definition of weeds in the ordinance, it excludes flowers, ornamentals, trees, shrubs, agricultural crops, now native plants, and gardens that are reasonably managed and maintained. And I think that's what Deb was alluding to about the right-of-way issues. So, I think this area still needs clarification. It's not as concise as the statement he made in his presentation that's in the meeting minutes. He explained to us that the vague language allows some flexibility in enforcement, but it also creates the opportunity for different interpretations, all of which can be valid, but may not be what is intended. And also during our meetings, he mentioned that mailbox plantings, which is one of the things that Deb was counting, are okay, you know, even if they are over 10 inches. So, perhaps the wording in this section could be revised, stating something like, translated into legalese, though, "The property owner is responsible for maintaining predominantly lawn consisting of turf grass or ground cover not exceeding 10 inches in height in the areas that are designated as public right-of-way." And then add another section saying mailbox plantings or driveway plantings up to a certain height are permitted where it doesn't obstruct roadway visibility. The other concern is one that was just discussed and is still on the screen. It's Section F1, restricting landscaping to 50% of a front yard. Our group was advocating for clear language, providing guidance for managed natural landscapes, and not for penalizing our neighbors who already have established large front yard plantings, and I wondered, will they be grandfathered? I know it's a complaint-driven system, but if it's passed as it is written now, they will be non-compliant and vulnerable. I mentioned in an email that I sent to all of you after the work session in January that this is an HOA-type restriction, which doesn't take into account unique characteristics of individual properties. The several large front yard plantings that I'm aware of were done to mitigate problem areas like slopes that are too inconvenient or unsafe to mow, or dense shade, or where turf grass doesn't grow anyway, expansive shallow tree roots, wet areas, or sometimes just because it's a good place for a garden. I looked at ordinance from other Ohio cities with populations similar to Beaver Creek between 40,000 and 50,000 residents, and I could find none that had a restriction like this. Most are variations of the traditional weeds and grass terminology with differing height limits. They have better definitions, some have better definitions. There are different variations in what they allow in the right-of-way, one up to three feet, as long as it doesn't restrict vehicular or pedestrian visibility. And then I discovered that Mansfield has a nice section on native plants, but didn't call it managed natural landscapes. I feel the emphasis should be primarily on management and maintenance, not the size of the plantings, and I ask you to please take these concerns into consideration. I think with a little more work, this can be such a good comprehensive landscape ordinance that it can then be used as a model for the other Ohio cities that have not updated their ordinances yet. And thank you once again. I really appreciate letting us be involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Seth Wagman. I live at 2782 Big Woods Trail. The neighbors on the street that's next to mine, on Varsity Drive, one of the neighbors has a beautiful front yard landscape. They have massive trees. I'm sure that no lawn could grow in that front yard because of the amount of shade that they get, and it's 100% natural landscape, and it's beautiful. It takes, I'm sure it takes a lot of work to make it that beautiful. They could just leave it as dirt, but it's a work of love, and it blesses our neighborhood. My kids and I love to walk by and just look at it. And so, I agree with the last speaker there. It seems as if you're requiring people to have a lawn here, which seems very unreasonable to me. You know, if they do have a lawn, it should be well-maintained, obviously, but I don't think you should require people to have turf lawn. If they want to have a fully natural landscape, I think it's, it would make more sense to let them do it. It actually takes a lot more work to maintain that, and so, why would we want to restrict people from doing that? It just doesn't make sense to me.
I'm Molly Finch at 2565 Springfieldine Road. I'm the owner of Goldfinch Garden Design. I help people create native plant landscapes that are beautiful, ecologically beneficial, and don't require a weekly date with a lawn mower. I love that this ordinance recognizes that native plants are not weeds. That's progress, and that's a win, but right in the middle of that step forward, there's something pulling us back, a 50% cap on native plantings in front yards. And I have to ask, why? The three-foot low-growing buffer is already a smart, fair compromise. It provides a cue to care, a tidy, intentional frame that reassures neighbors. That's important, and it's enough, but telling people who have spent years investing their time, money, and way too many weekends tending their gardens instead of doing literally anything else more fun, that they have to rip out their, half their hard work and replace it with turf? In my professional and my personal opinion, that's unnecessary. So, let's talk about turf. It needs constant mowing, which increases emissions. It provides zero food for pollinators whose populations are crashing. It provides zero food for caterpillars, which make up 96% of songbird diets, and fewer caterpillars, fewer birds. I don't want fewer baby birds. It increases stormwater runoff, flooding, and pollution, which the city then has to deal with, and it uses tons of water and other resources and essentially gives nothing back. And let's be real, there's so much we can't control in this world, so much that feels too big and overwhelming for any one of us to really change, but one thing we can do is plant. We can turn empty, lifeless lawns into spaces that heal the land instead of polluting it, and that's what people in this community are already doing. They're already investing in Beaver Creek's future. Why would we punish them for that? The three-foot setback is enough to keep things tidy, ease concerns, and create structure. The 50% rule is unnecessary and arbitrary, and it doesn't serve Beaver Creek's future, so I urge you to take it out. Let's support the people who are actively making this community better, not force them to undo their hard work, because in the end, what we grow today shapes the world we leave behind.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Thank you guys for your time. I just, I wanted to propose some questions.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this, Aunt Swenette Marlowe at 729 Merrick Place? My house is adjacent to Merrick Park, and I have this huge runoff ditch that goes into the creek. It is, over the past eight years that I've lived here, it's been eating away my turf lawn further and further back, and I am an avid gardener, and I am a wheat once or twice a week mower, but I'm having issues with that drainage ditch. I've had the city engineer out and the county engineer, and what they can provide for me as a resolution is put riprap in there. First, that's about 12 grand. I am not made of that kind of money. And also, we would go back to the weeds issue. We would have weeds within the riprap almost immediately. Because it is leading directly into the waterway, I wouldn't be able to spray those if I wanted to. So, the resolution that my husband and I had come with, especially since we're right next to the park, is to start naturalizing that area and planting native grasses. The big blue stem gets quite tall. The roots reach like 10 foot deep, and that's going to help us with our erosion issues and also provide benefit to the park and wildlife. The neighbors seem to be liking it so far. The neighbors seem to be liking it so far. If I have to pull that back, do I need to cut those down? Because others in the neighborhood have pampas grass and feather grass, and these are 12-foot, six- and 12-foot-high plants, some of them. They're huge. So my little managed blue stems here and there are going to be over the three-foot. Is that decorative? What does that fall under? So I'd like to see that clarified. And then also, I don't want to have to go in there and mow, so we planted clover in. Is that going to be legal? So I'd like to fall within the rules. I just would ask for more clarification on that so that we can work together in that. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Breida Carpenter, 1317 Fudge Drive. My husband and I moved there in '68. I moved to Beaver Creek in 1941. You can do the math. I've always been very proud of Beaver Creek until recently. I was proud of it because when we became a state, Beaver Creek was one of the original township, one of the original four in Green County. Our high school was the second in the entire state. I've been very, very proud of Beaver Creek for years. I'm no longer proud of Beaver Creek. I'm very disappointed in it. About a month ago, this place's room was full of people that wanted to protect our natural resources by planting them in their yard, which they certainly should have the right to do. This doesn't allow that. It's fine to see those beautiful pictures of yards that were probably professionally done. That's fine. But if we don't protect our national resources, we're going to lose them. The rivers will become polluted. Your great-grandchildren won't know a pelleted woodpecker from a dove. You won't be able to find the wildflowers that are blooming now. If you pass this without any consideration for the dozens of people that were here a month ago wanting to protect our wildlife and our natural resources, you're adding to that, and you're saying, eh, what do we care? We're just Beaver Creek. Let it happen. It's going to happen. Let Oakwood take care of that. Let Centerville take care of that. Let Will Springs take care of that. You're not going to bother. I guess that's your right. You're not going to bother. Everybody isn't good at their job. Being a teacher, for many years, I could give you horror stories about teachers who dated the high school girls. You finally did marry one. I can tell you teachers who were not rightly hinged. They finally were talked into retiring because they thought the secretary had a button that made the coffee machine not work. So everybody isn't good at their job. Some people take our job, some politicians. Go back to your history books. Look at some of the things that have happened in the history that were not good. Teapot Dome would be one I'd start with. This does not allow for people to protect our national resources. You can choose not to. You can say, okay, what do I care? Not my problem. But your great-grandchildren won't be able to enjoy the nature that my children did or my grandchildren did. That's up to you. You have a choice. There should be something in here that allows people to protect our natural resources. Okay, the yard doesn't look exactly like somebody's next door. As long as it's not in the middle of the street, it shouldn't be a problem. People have certain rights, and you're taking them away. I'm very disappointed in Beaver Creek. We had to be a city because people were eating us alive. Everybody wanted to eat some Beaver Creek. But I am very disappointed in this, because you're not protecting the natural resources. I suppose that's your right. There was a saying, "If I don't step up, who will?" Well, that's what I'm telling you. If you don't step up, who will? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am coming to this lately. I only noticed a mention of this in the WYSO website, mentioned this meeting. I'm all in favor of being able to have natural native plants. Of course, there have to be some kinds of rules. I wonder about things that might lead to conflicts if there is not clarification. One is, who is determining what is native and what is invasive? Is that being done at all? Is that defined by Ohio law? I have no idea. And pardon my ignorance, as I say, I'm coming to this late. Also, I am wondering, who is eligible to place a complaint? Is it limited to immediate neighbors? Is it limited to, well, is it open to anybody who happens to drive by and just frowns on It's hard for me to imagine how that could be settled without having to get a little bit nitpicky, but it might be worth doing if complaints could come up over, say, well, that's not native, or yes, it is, or that's invasive, get it away from me. Another issue is, this would not be really a matter of law for Beaver Creek, but I wonder if there would be any suggestions available on good practices, even a list of what is considered native. And just, you know, resources to learn more about doing natural and native gardening. Might be handy, but that's not really a matter of law. But it's just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this. And Counsel, Councilman Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all for your comments. Appreciate it, and thanks for working with Mr. Burket and Funk. Looks like there's a lot that's continued to move on this, so much appreciated. And I'll also say thank you for using the Board of Zoning Appeals as a mechanism. I think that'll be a good way of solving some points. A few questions. One, I think just practical, would it be possible to get Mrs. Marlowe some answers as to how she should proceed in situations like that? I'm not 100% familiar with the property, but can you give her examples of what types of things she should do, how she should approach it?
I'm not an arborist or anything like that. It would be hard for me to give recommendations specifically. I mean, that's beyond what I could do.
Sure. Can you direct her to someone that would, Mr. Funk perhaps, that would give her direction?
Yeah, I mean, what I can, if it's something that we want to address in the code, you can put something, the three-foot setback, or in areas of obvious erosion prevention or something like that. If that's the concern, where it has to be there, there's not, it can't be a fence, but it's preventing obvious erosion.
Sure.
I mean, language like that can be added.
Yeah, that's helpful.
That kind of gives a bit of a, some flexibility there.
When I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, there were just, there were cases that come up where.
You've got 20,000 properties in the city, and none of them are the same.
Yeah, that's the challenge. So I fully sympathize with what you've had to, you know, how to come up with something along these lines, but it is the source of some level of challenge. How did we land on grandfathering in those with 50% plus?
It wasn't, it's not specifically called out. If there exists now something that's over 50%, we'll know, we'll be able to look back at aerial photos, and we're not going to require people to remove landscaping that they're now or was there in '23 and '24 come this spring if it's well-managed and maintained.
Because I think for Mrs. Whittaker, Mrs. Carpenter, these are big points of concern. I think we can assuage a lot of it by simply saying, this is grandfathered in. We can, if it's already well-managed, you know, we can, I don't know if we need additional language of grandfathering in.
It's certainly something we can look at. I mean, this is something, this would require two readings if it moves past the first reading. So I mean, that's the language we can, with the direction, we can propose.
Yeah, and I want to thank Mrs. Carr for working with you, and I think there's a lot that's here. What I'll say is, this could be something that's incremental. I mean, we have to balance out different interests in the city, and, you know, if this is a good starting point, it can always be adjusted at some point in the future.
Certainly, yeah.
I think there's a decent amount that balances what people want.
Yeah, with any law, if there's finding that something's not working, then.
Sure.
You know, it's obviously, can be changed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shorts, are you able to talk?
I am, and I apologize. I agree with Councilmember Doerr. I do think that in addressing Ms. Marlowe's concerns, I do like the idea of adding something that talks about areas where there is clear erosion prevention. I think that that's really important, especially given the fact that we don't have excess funds to address a lot of our issues here within the city. And so I think any way that you can naturally handle it would be much preferred, and so I would like to see some type of exception placed in there. I also shared concerns about this being retroactive and the individuals who may already have that 50% being impacted. I don't know what type of language we would want to put in or how we would define that or if that's something that, how we would actually define that. I guess I'll defer to legal on that. But if I were a homeowner and I had more than 50% of my front lawn that was properly manicured and I, this ordinance came into place, I would want to ensure that there was something within the language of the new ordinance that provided that protection, coming from my legal perspective. The one question I did have is in regards to Ms. Carr's concerns about the mailbox plantings and kind of that definition in D. Is there anything that we can do to address those concerns?
Well, what we want to ensure is that there's no line-of-sight issue.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of driveways and give people the opportunity to have landscaping around their mailbox, which a lot of people have already.
Yeah.
But once you, it's just, the language is very challenging when you go, you start talking about mailbox, and then you have to define, okay, the area around the mailbox, what's, it would just add a lot more layers of regulation. So we're trying to keep it as general as we can, but enforceable at the same time. That's why we have that caveat in it, that no, I have to find the section that talks about it can't cause a line-of-sight. I'd have to find the exact section, but basically it says it can't create a line-of-sight hazard.
The other question that I thought that was posed that is of importance is who is determining what is native or what is intrusive?
Well, our regulations, we don't make a distinction between native and non-native in terms of what you can have, as long as it's maintained, whether it's native or not. It's just, it can't be a noxious weed, and the noxious weed, we use the State of Ohio list of noxious weeds.
Okay.
So if you want to do an all non-native landscape bed, as long as it's maintained and managed, it's fine, or 50 for 50, or 20, whatever, however you want to, whatever plants you want to use in that, as long as it's not a noxious weed, we don't have a distinction.
And that maintained, as Councilmember Doerr alluded to, is kind of at the discretion of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Well, we defined in here what managed and maintained is, and if there's disagreement, what I'm looking, my Matt or me or Don, the code enforcement officer, we're all in agreement that it's not managed and maintained, then the BZA can obviously overrule us.
Okay. And then the last thing that Mr. Kelleher brought up was who can complain, and that's anyone.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, any citizen.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I think.
You don't have to have standing or anything like that.
I think that's all the questions, kind of concerns that I have for right now. I will say that when we talk about the retroactivity, I do want to emphasize that I think that my preference is that it applies to the, in excess of 50%, but obviously, I think that those areas still need to be managed or maintained in accordance with the regulation as it's written.
Yeah, the county's been good at doing aerial photos every year for the last, at least 10 years, so we'll be able to have a fairly good idea of what's there now versus what would be in in the future, to know what areas would be grandfathered or not.
And Randy, I do have one more question. I guess now that we're talking about the logistics of this, how are we determining 50%?
Well, I mean, I did that with just simple GIS and measurement function. If it's 51%, we're not going to mark out some areas for them to cut away. I mean, it's going to be, we're going to get a general idea of what they have when we look at it.
Through GIS and the aerial photos?
Yeah, if we needed to do GIS, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Your Honor, I think a lot of the questions that have been raised here by Councilmember Doerr and Councilmember Shorts, I think we see this ordinance, as you said, as kind of a work in progress. We're not going to resolve all these things tonight. They're going to have to be taken as this thing is implemented. As I hear people, I don't think you can plug all the holes tonight. I think it's going to be kind of a work in progress. That was the only comment I'd make. I think they're very legitimate questions that have been raised here, but I don't think we can resolve them all in just one meeting. I think you've got to have the ordinance, and then you've got to work with the ordinance, like we do a lot of times. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, thank you. Randy, I appreciate all your work on this. I do think this has been unnecessarily vilified. We are not going after, nowhere in here, unless you've sent me the wrong document, nowhere in here do I see we're going to have people rip out beautifully manicured landscapes. And nowhere in here do I see we are encouraging people to destroy the natural resources in the city by telling them they can't have grass over 10 feet because it blocks the right-of-way. With that, can you go back to Slide 3 for me? I have a question about how we're defining areas where there are no sidewalks. So it says between the edge of the pavement and the property line where there is no curb or sidewalk. Can you give me an example of what that would look like? Because if I'm, seriously, if I'm a homeowner and I don't have a sidewalk, I have no idea where that line is.
Typically, it's 12 and 1/2 feet from the center line of the road. A lot of times, it's a ditch. Each, I mean.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah.
If you know where the center line, you wrote it.
Well, that was, yeah, and that's.
I mean, it can be challenging. I mean, you can go on Green County GIS and see where your actual property line is and how many feet of what you take as your front lawn is actually part of the city right-of-way. I mean.
And that's, I think that's what I'm getting at, is that there are pieces of a person's property that are technically right-of-way or not that homeowner's property. And I think that's where I would, I envision issues. I'm not saying that there's any wording in here that's incorrect. I think that just may be a point of contention as we get into this. And you wouldn't happen to have any pictures from your last presentation of what we're trying to, I don't want to say prohibit, but we are prohibiting, but what we're trying to avoid is the pictures of the overgrown grass areas that are unkept, unmanaged, that are blocking the right-of-way, that are making it difficult. Yeah, here we go. That are making it difficult for people to see. So in that middle picture, for example, under Section, subsection D of this, are we saying that there's kind of like that little divot? of like that little divot there and that would be?
Probably the first six, seven feet of that grass area is right of way.
Okay. And I think that's, I mean, really, I appreciate everybody's questions and comments because you have made this work in progress as it is. You have made this more manageable for us to understand, to make it so that residents can have the yards that they want without having yards that make it difficult for people to see around. Um, but I do think we just need to keep it in perspective, what we're trying to avoid here. And it really is areas like this, not the beautifully man's landscaped areas that people take a lot of time and a lot of money that I commend them for to be able to do. So, um, I appreciate that. And then I just do have a point of clarification for counsel, legal counsel. Randy mentioned we need to remove the point 1-1 in section B4. When we get to the next point, is that an amendment that's going to be needed to make before we can move forward for this, that we need to amend it?
Yeah. I'll leave, I'll leave the legal part up. But I mean, when you guys, if you want to add language for the grandfathering and add language for the erosion.
Oh, we don't have to do that. That would be the, that would be the ultimate passing of the ordinance, right? This is just.
It would, I could have it all prepared for the second reading.
Got it, okay. Yep, I'm moving ahead. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of the comments that council had high share. And I would also echo that we are not trying to prohibit well-maintained and managed native landscape areas. I mean, that's opposite of what I like to do. Um, thank you.
Um, the, Mrs. Marlowe mentioned a three-foot rule on her big blue stem. If it's, if it's in a, if, if native plantings are in a managed and defined planting area, do we have height restrictions?
No, nor, or a non-native either. Um, I, I was taking it as, and I don't know the property, when the only thing we have three feet written anywhere is you have to be three feet off the property line if you have no fence. But there's no height limitations as long as you're not creating, if you're not, you know, the right of way causing a line of sight issue, then yeah, that's, that's, that's a problem. But, you know, ornamental or native, non-native landscaping doesn't have a height limitation. It's sunflower. It's going to get to be eight, 10 feet.
As long as it's in a defined planting zone?
Right.
With the rest.
Whether it goes 10 feet down and 10 feet up or.
Okay.
There's no, there's no height limitations. It's just manage and maintain is what we're stressing.
So Mrs. Carr brought up about the right of way not being clearly defined enough. Can you think back about your discussions with, with her and, and the input that they had and how we might be able to define what, what can and cannot be in that area or the height limitations? Because I think she said it was only limited to 10 inches now. All just have to be turf? Or could it be native plantings that don't get above 10 inches? I've just, I just want some clarity on that.
Sure. Um, just give me one second here, I'll find the section. What we're saying in section D, I guess would be, indeed, the main paragraph or the top paragraph of section D, you're saying, um, that the owner is responsible for removing grasses and weeds that are over 10 inches. Um, that's in the right of way. It doesn't mention anything about, um, it doesn't say anything about landscape beds or anything like that. It's saying any weeds, any grasses. And a weed is defined as, if you go, then move around, I mean, that's just how ordinances are sometimes. Weed is any vegetation commonly referred to as a weed, but also grasses, annual plants, vegetations that aren't managed and maintained. So if it is vegetation and it's unmanaged, it's unmaintained, then we would consider it a weed. So they have to get that down to 10 inches.
But just so I'm clear, so if I were to have a defined landscape bed within the right of way, that the plants were under 10 inches, that would be permitted?
I believe so, yes. Based on the, the language, yeah, I mean, there'd be nothing to prohibit it. But it can't cause a line of sight issue. So if you have your.
Totally. I mean, and 10 inches should not be causing a line of sight.
Well, no, yeah, I mean, but if, if you're having a landscape bed and you put sunflowers in your landscape bed that's out in the right of way, and they start growing up, they, I mean, they're going to be.
No, my point is, within the right of way, I, I agree, we should limit the height within the right of way for safety and, for safety. So if, if we had a planting that went above that, then they could, they could get a citation or ask to.
Keep it down to 10 inches.
That particular plant or keep it cut or whatever below 10 inches. Okay. Um, I'm in agreement with the grandfathering of existing. And I could even be convinced that, um, we could consider a higher percentage. I think I said this in our work session or the last time we spoke about this. As long as we've got defined and maintained planting areas, um, I don't know whether 50% really matters to me, um, as long as it's, as long as it's done right. And I think that if you flip back to your other slide, there are a few that I would argue are definitely not done correctly. Um, you know, I mean, the top left there, uh, this one, I just, there's no definition to those, um, planting beds, in my opinion. If done correctly, I think we could get by with more, a higher percentage.
And I know there was a question about clover and that, that would be considered ground cover. Um, it could be used if you want to do all clover yard and, you know, as long as it doesn't grow over 10 inches, which, you know, clover really does that much. But that can, in place of grass, I mean, that's an option.
Um, I'll take this one step further, too, is that I know we don't talk about invasive versus native, but I would be open to talk about invasive species because, um, you know, I would, I would hate to see a defined planting bed with a bunch of bush honeysuckle in it. That's all.
Thank you very much. I, I really don't have a lot. Most of it's been covered. I do want to thank everyone for working with Mr. Burkett and Mr. Funk to come up with this ordinance. Uh, I, I know it's not going to address everything. I mean, we have 20,000 homes in Beaver Creek and trying to address each and every one of those, uh, this room isn't big enough to hold that ordinance. Uh, so we, I think it's, it's a good start. I think we can, there's a couple of things that have come up here that we probably need to adjust for the, the next reading if it passes. And then we go from there. Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know if, uh, right of way is also an engineering thing because from, uh, yeah, if you want to come up, Jeff, uh, from an engineering perspective, we highly discourage planting in right of ways. Because at any time, if you've got thousands of dollars in plants and it meets the zoning code, and guess what, we're doing a road widening, we will not be reimbursing you because that's city-owned property. So you're taking at a risk of planting in the right of way because if we do happen to have a road project come through and needing to widen the road, of course, we pay for, uh, any part that's not right of way. If we need additional right of way, of course, the city reimburses the property owner for that. But that part that is already right of way will not be reimbursed for anything that you have planted into that. So that's something I want to stress on that. And please, Mr. Moore, may I?
Just to kind of dovetail what the city manager was saying, just to say, too, the planning department, they were great. They, they talked to us and putting this ordinance together, got our input on the, the needs for, for the right of way and to not interfere with, like we already, like Randy already mentioned, the safety, having things grow up where people can't see it along their driveways. You know, another aspect of it is if we have like ditches, we want to make sure we can get into those ditches and make sure they don't accumulate water. They can, they can serve the, the public function of draining water from point A to point B and other factors like that. But, and again, I think Randy did, did a really good job of summarizing a lot of those items. But as the city manager said, though, if there's, you know, an instance where we have to like go in and do maintenance on a ditch, or we have to put up a sign, things like that, we, we can't guarantee, we wouldn't be disturbing any kind of landscaping that encroaches within the public right of way.
Right. Yeah. So I have a question. Can you go back to the, the picture, Jeff? This question is for you, uh, on fudge. So if you were going to be doing some, you know, ditch work in here, that, it would be well within the city's.
You have to take it out.
Right, to just.
Yeah, you're.
That ditch. And, and people do need to be aware of that.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, that's a really good point.
Right. And when it grows up like that, you know, obviously the ditch isn't functioning as intended. If you have all that vegetation and stuff blocking the flow of water, it's something that we would, you know, more than likely want to get in there. It'll build up the siltation, too. If you slow up the water, it deposits all, all the suspended solids over time. So that would be a spot where I'm sure we would have to do some ditch maintenance in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor, one final thing. I think, um, this ordinance keeps improving and improving.
Right.
Um, it may be worth considering a third reading, just so we have an opportunity to listen more. Something to float, something to consider.
That actually can be considered next time, too, for.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, we don't have to decide now, but just to put that out there so we can hear from the residents.
It's also something we could probably add to the, possibly, I don't know what the schedule looks like now, to the work session next week, to discuss it a little bit more.
Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, I move, uh, 25-05 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-05 to the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pretty good. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I really appreciate your, uh, being here. So, next up, liquor license.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So we have a request for a new liquor permit. Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request for a new D1 liquor permit for Sakura Sushi and Korean Cuisine located at 3464 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite F. The required record checks were completed on the applicant. No criminal history was found. Staff does not have any objections or concerns. Staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Moved or approved without comment?
I have a motion and a second to approve this without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, for you in the audience now, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. It's going to get very boring. We're going to be doing a lot of board appointments and commission appointments, so it takes, takes a while. You're welcome to stay and see what we do. All right, decision items, board and committee appointments.
I move to open nominations.
Second.
For, sorry, uh, Planning Commission?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, nominations do not require a second. So if you nominate, you don't have to have a second.
I nominate Mike Self.
That's okay. You stole it from me, but.
I nominate James Fountain. I move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? There are two spots available. We have two nominations, so.
I move.
Is not required.
Oh, perfect.
At this point, uh, we will be appointing.
Yeah.
I was going to do that just now. I just hadn't gotten there.
I move to appoint Mike Self and James Fountain to Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, appoint Mike Self and James Fountain to the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have two spots available on this.
Move to nominate Randy Roach.
I move to nominate Jordan Rader. I move, I move to close nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Again, these are two vacancies here and we have two nominations. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Randy Roach and Jordan Rader to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Randy Roach and Jordan Rader to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for Park Recreation and Culture Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open, or open the nominations for Parks and Recreation and Culture Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I nominate Candy Meyer.
Second.
I move to close.
Nominations for the Parks Advisory.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, close nominations for Parks Recreation and Culture Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 There is only one position available and one nomination, so.
Move to appoint Candy Meyer to Parks Recreation and Culture Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Candy Meyer to the Parks Recreation and Culture Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I move to open nominations for the BikeWay Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the BikeWay Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I nominate Ed Brown.
We have two regular nominations and an unexpired. So we'll do the two regular first and then do the unexpired.
Oh, sorry, Don.
Nominate Michael Nichols.
I move to close nominations for the, well, I don't need to close it for the new term, right? I just, I move to nominate Catherine Forden for the unexpired term.
We'll do that second. We'll do the, the two regular first and then we'll do the.
So I need to close nominations and then reopen them for the unexpired term. So I move to close nominations for the unexpired term, or the new term.
Second.
Regular term.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the regular appointments of the Bike Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have two openings and two nominations. So, do I have a motion?
Move to appoint, uh, Ed Brown, Don, and Michael Nichols.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Ed Brown and Michael Nichols to the full term of the Bike Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And now we have the unexpired term that goes from March 20, March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2026.
I move to open nominations for the unexpired term for the BikeWay Advisory.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the unexpired term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nominations?
I move to nominate Catherine Forden. I move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to appoint Catherine Forden to the BikeWay Advisory, unexpired term.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Catherine Forden to the unexpired term for the BikeWay Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Tree Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nominations?
Nominate Jeffrey Burson.
I move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Tree Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion?
Move to open nominations for the
We have to appoint
Move to appoint
Forgive me. I move to appoint Jeffrey Burson to the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Jeffrey Burson to the Tree Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Advisory Committee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nominations?
I nominate Adrian Johnson.
Second.
You don't have to second a nomination.
Chris Mears.
You don't have to second a nomination.
Sorry.
I nominate Terry Zalat.
I move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Youth Advisory Committee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Adrian Johnson, Chris Mears, and Terry Zalat to the Youth Development Committee Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Adrian Johnson, Chris Mears, and Terry Zalat to the Youth Advisory Commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Okay. I'd just like to keep saying all these words. Did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion, okay. Motion to open nominations for Environmental Advisor Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And this one, we also have two regular and one expired. We'll do them all at one time.
Nominate Leonard Brown.
I nominate Tim Pritchard.
For the unexpired term?
Yes.
Nominate, oh, you've got it. Nominate Robert Steinbach.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for Environmental Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Leonard Brown and Robert Steinbach to full terms and Tim Pritchard to the unexpired term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Leonard Brown and Robert Steinbach to the full regular terms and Tim Pritchard to the unexpired term, which runs from March 1, 2025 to February 28, 2026. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to open nominations for the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Personnel Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nominations?
I nominate Ryan Leach.
I move to close nominations for the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations Personnel Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I have a motion to appoint.
Move to appoint Ryan Leach.
Second.
Sure. Sure.
Council, as was in your packet
We have to vote on that.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I thought we did.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 This gets confusing.
Believe me, it does.
Yeah, I didn't either. As
We did it, didn't we?
Yeah, we needed to.
Okay, okay. I could be the one in the wrong.
Right. As you guys were informed in the packet, we had one applicant. This is impact fee. I think, Jeff, when is the next time the impact fee is going to come back around?
It'll be this year.
This year? All right. So per council, what I'm going to ask council to do is when we are amending the impact fee this year, there's, I don't believe, we'll have to do some legal research, but whether or not we can make the impact fee board be the Board of Zoning of Appeals. It's never been used. It's never been, there's no current members. There hasn't been a member of it since I've been here. There's never been a filing. It's since 1993. And this has nothing to do with impact fees determining what they are. The legislation is purely kind of like the grass. It gives an outlet to appeal somebody if you don't agree with it. And this, in this case, is the impact fee amount, which has never been an issue. So it's up to you guys if you want to appoint the single applicant. The thought here is, as it comes back around this year, that we will amend the ordinance to make, instead of a special impact fee board, just say, you know, if legally we can, and that's something we'll have to do research, that it would be the same right to appeal, but it'll just be to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that will condense some and maybe actually have people, you know, maybe give some Board of Zoning Appeals something in the future. I doubt it, but more to do. So that was just my thoughts. But if you guys want to appoint CJ to that, that's, that's great too. Those are my thoughts.
Are you looking for comment?
I'm looking for comment.
I mean, I agree with the city manager. I think we ought to wait and see.
I tend to agree with that because we've never had an appeal, and it only covers a small portion of the city anyway.
Well, if we can put it on the DVA.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I don't think so.
No action? All right.
No action.
All right. That completes.
Mayor, I do have a couple other, I do have another question.
Sure.
In our packet, there were several people who had listed other interests in boards that, that we're not voting on now or don't have vacancy and things like that. You know, the Green County Board of Health, there was a few different things. Can you explain to me how, why that's an option for them to pick when we don't, when we're not appointing them? Does, do, am I making sense?
Yes.
Okay, you want to know
Which boards?
Why on the list, we didn't see second and third choices?
Um, no, we, some, some people, some people had, uh, you know, Green County Board of Health is one of their choices that they wanted. The Community Reinvestment Housing Council is one that they wanted.
There are no vacancies.
Things that were, okay. And that's, that was just what I wanted clarity on.
There's no vacancies?
Yeah, well, I didn't get that.
Oh, that's right. That's true.
We didn't get that list until now, so, um, okay. That's, that's all I wanted. And I, the other thing I just really wanted to say was, I was really impressed with the number of people that, that put in applications to serve our community. And, and fortunately or unfortunately, there were like 15 or 16 people that had the desire to serve that we didn't even get to select. So I would encourage them to continue to look for ways to help the city, even though we didn't serve them, select them today. But I appreciate all of the output.
Okay. And just to piggyback off what Vice Mayor Bales said, next time we get this, if we could get this in advance, so it tells us if there are vacancies.
Absolutely.
So that he's not writing it all down?
Yeah.
What's the next thing here? All right. Council appointment.
Council appointments. You all have the list in front of you? And I guess we'll just start at the, the top, the Fourth of July Committee. Councilman Schwartz, you want to continue with that?
Yes, please, unless someone else has an interest.
And Councilman Garcia, you want to be the backup? Is still or not?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think the one thing I just want to mention is that, just overall, as we're going through this, Councilman Literal is not primary on anything right now. So I would like to find him something to be primary. I know exactly which one he does not want, so I want to make sure we do not volunteer him to do something he definitely said he does not want to do. But kind of as you're going through this, if you are primary or secondary on more than one, if there's anything that you would mind, you know, shifting responsibility to Council Member Literal, I think it's important that he serve as primary and
I spoke to him about that, and he told me he would be glad to serve on the Green County Water Advisory Task Force.
Great.
So, and I mean, I'm primary and I don't, I don't need to be
You have a couple things.
Yeah.
But yes, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. I missed the first one. One Ohio Region 14. I think we already have a, you're there. And so I think since you've got the history there, it might be best to stay with that.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on there. Please.
Uh, Green Cat's Board Liaison. Mr. Dewar, you're on that now.
Happy to serve. Continue. Yep.
Green County Family and Children First Council. Mr. Curran, you're still, you'll stay with that. And you're backup, so. And then the Green County Water Advisor Task Force will, uh, Councilman Literal will take that over. Uh, who wants to be secondary on that?
Happy to stay.
Okay. Uh, Green County Dayton Mayors and Managers, that's myself and Mr. Bales. Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. I think we're looking at maybe making a change here.
Yeah.
I would be happy to be the primary.
We've had a couple conversations of this. Given this is my last year on council and I'm termed out, I think it makes sense to have someone who is going to be around the next couple years to serve as secondary. I would suggest Councilman Literal, just because he has two years of his term left, right? Or is it three?
Three.
Three?
Including this year.
It is three.
Yeah, he has three years. Okay.
Plus he can run again.
And he can run again. So I think as, you know, as we continue our conversations of how we can position the city within VRPC, I do think having someone there, and you can run for Executive Council in the next two, three years, but you won't
I'm
You're turned out as well.
I'm done in three years, right. So, I mean, I don't mind transitioning that next year if we want to.
Yeah, I think, you know, it is hard to, that's a hard one just to jump into. And you have the background to be able to transition now, which makes sense. So I'm happy to be pulled off of that entirely for the sake of the city, if it makes sense to start getting some other people looped in who are going to be the ones taking over on that.
I think longevity speaks a lot when it comes to VRPC, is having the experience and the ability to, to understand how the inner workings are. It makes a huge difference.
And it takes a while. I mean, it can't
When you stop and think that we're getting what, how many million dollars, seven, eight million dollars from them this year?
Seven million this year.
Yeah, just in grants. So if, to have someone there that's familiar with everything really makes a huge difference.
I'd be happy to be primary.
And David is secondary?
Yeah, any objections? I'm, I'm fine with that.
Does David want it?
Yes, he does.
That is not the one. That is not the one he told me he doesn't want. I promise.
No, he does. I spoke with him because that was one of the things he told me.
Okay.
I wasn't going to bring that up, but let it kind of flow. But yes, he does want that. Uh, okay, Upper Little Miami Valley, Upper Little Miami River. Right now, we've got Vice Mayor Bales and Mr. Curran on that. Stay with that?
Uh, it's fine with me. I think we've met like once in the last like couple of years. So if anybody else is interested in it, I, I mean, I don't mind not doing it. But I don't mind doing it either.
So we'll just leave it for now?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Just giving anyone the option. I wanted to jump in to a committee that hardly ever meets.
Uh, Ohio Mayor's Alliance, I'll continue with that, obviously. And then Mr. Bales will be the backup on that. Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee, I'm willing to stay as primary with that because I, that's kind of been one of my little favorite ones for a long time. So we do need a backup or a secondary for that. That's one that Mr. Literal said that he
Does not want.
Was not, does not want.
Yes. I wasn't going to call it out, but yes, we could use a new secondary.
So
I, I can do it for, just for this year, if that's
Yeah, it's, I typically go, but you know, it's just a matter of sitting in on the meetings. Just kind of. Golf Committee, Mr. Bales, Mr. Dewar, you know, continue with that?
Yes.
I mean, I'm fine doing it. I mean, I like doing it, but if someone else is interested
Primary.
I mean, if you wanted to be primary, I mean, they do meet during the day.
Could be tricky for me.
We can just keep it how it is. I mean, I've called on you a couple times to ask if it wins.
Yeah, you can always go. I mean, it's not a, just because he's
Oh, yeah, anyone.
And I could fill in more, but it is, yeah, the, the time is hard.
Okay.
Continue with that. And then we have the Zoning Code Land Use Plan Update Steering Committee. I know Mr. Literal had expressed an interest in being involved with that. And so we need, we actually need two people.
Did we say last time that we wanted two people to attend those meetings?
It's not a primary and
Not a primary, yeah.
No, it's two primaries, basically.
It'll be about eight meetings during that, right? During the 16 months.
Well, I don't mind doing it. That's
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind it either. What's the timeframe? I'm sorry, Pete.
Between now and July
16 months, basically. I know you're not, a lot of different things. I mean, Mr. Bales is, so.
Let me take it. I'll take it.
Uh, would that be?
David and
David, okay.
Yeah, David and
Is that all? If we can, can we have Debbie read back just to confirm she, I think she did, and then somebody can make a motion based on?
Sure, sure.
Uh, we, yeah, mainly, I believe so, yeah.
On the one Ohio Region 14, were we leaving Literal as secondary? Okay. Ohio Region 1, Region 14, Schwartz primary, Literal secondary, Fourth of July Committee, Schwartz primary, Garcia secondary. Green Cats Board, Dewar primary, Literal secondary. Uh, Green County Family and Children First, Curran primary, Schwartz secondary. Green County Water Advisory Task Force, Literal primary, Dewar secondary. Green, or Great Dayton Mayors and Managers, Adams primary, Bales secondary. MVRPC, Bales primary, Literal secondary. Upper Little Miami River, Bales primary, Curran secondary. Ohio Mayor's Alliance, Adams primary, Bales secondary. Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee, Adams primary, Garcia secondary. Golf Committee, Bales primary, Dewar secondary. And for the Steering Committee, two both primaries, our Literal and Schwartz.
That's exactly what I had. Do I have a motion to make those appointments?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to do what the clerk said, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next item up is DC, DDC, DC Fly-In. A lot of initials there.
It's a lot of them. I'm interested in going.
I'm interested in going as well.
I feel that I should go, since as mayor, so.
Councilmember Literal spoke last time about it.
He said no.
Did he?
Yeah, he stepped, he stepped back.
Glenn?
I'll step back as well.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to go.
Chuck, what do you, what do you think? You want to go?
In there, done that.
I was looking for something pithier, but I'll take.
Many times.
I will take that. If that's the case, then I would move to, well, can I move? I can move. I would move to approve sending Mayor Adams, Vice Mayor Bales, Councilwoman Schwartz, and myself to the DDC Fly-In.
Second.
I have a motion to have myself, Vice Mayor Bales, Councilwoman Garcia, and Councilwoman Schwartz attend the DC Fly-In. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Council time. I don't think there's anything else on the list, is it? Councilman Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. I would first like to start by thanking the road crews for the recent cleanup of the inclement weather. Bit of a surprise and very quick, and yet done with professionalism and with speed, and so a big thank you on behalf of the community because it's been a very busy and probably very tiring winter season as well. May not be done, but it looks like at least there's a little bit of a reprieve, so thank you. Want to thank all of the applicants as, I really echo the comments of Vice Mayor Bales. There's so many high-quality applicants, and there're just, there're only so many spaces. And it's, it can be difficult to work your way in and whatnot, but it takes some understanding additional of the city, and just sometimes you have to make decisions with it, so, but I really want to thank everyone for that. I've been debating whether or not to bring this up for some time, but I've been chatting with an applicant about the creation of a City of Beaver Creek flag. It's not something that we have. Fairborn has a flag, Xenia has a flag, Green County has a flag. Could be an interesting way of engaging the public, especially our youth, and so I'll simply just float that out to council, but being a professor of international relations, I love flags, and so it'd be kind of neat to have one for the city, but it's also, I don't want to force things if it's, there's just no interest in it as well. But I'll leave it there, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you.
Mixing it up.
You remember when we spoke about the city logo, right?
Yeah.
A flag would be great. I'll be really brief. Two things. Last week was the Golf Advisory Board meeting, was largely a recap of 2024. They are very proud, and so am I, of the fact that they did 39,000 rounds of golf at, at the golf course last year. It's the highest they've ever done. And so they anticipate, weather permitting, matching that or exceeding that this year. League play and outings are dominating the tee times, the tee sheet there, so it's kind of a double-edged sword because, you know, they're full. They've packed it up every afternoon with, with leagues, really Monday through Thursday, and then outings on, on Fridays and some Saturdays and so forth, so it's great from the fact that the course is getting used, but on the other hand, a lot of our residents, when they call to play golf, unless you can play in the morning up until noon time, you know, you might not be able to play until sometimes on Sunday or Saturday afternoons and so on and so forth, so it's a good, bad problem to have. They also talked about their capital projects that we reviewed during the budget process. This is the last year of their bunker renovations, so after this year, all of the bunkers will be renovated. The ones they've done so far are just fantastic. The last thing I've got to say, that was all for golf course, is that I was notified about a meeting for the Green County Builders Forum. They meet every month or two with, at the Green County Engineers Office, and I typically try and attend those, although I can't this week. It's Wednesday, this Wednesday, 11:30 to 1 at the Engineers Office, so if anyone's interested. They talk really about new development happening across the region, but specifically at this one, Green County, and so I enjoy going, but I can't this week, so if anyone else wants to stop in at the County Engineers on Wednesday and attend, that'd be great. That's all.
My wife's having surgery. She can't, so. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to also keep it short and sweet, but I do want to thank all of the applicants for all of the boards and commissions. As Vice Mayor Bales stated, we had a tremendous outpouring of applications, and it is a shame that we can't accommodate everyone, but we do maintain that list in the event that there is a vacancy that would come up, and so hopefully, in the future, those positions will become available for those who keep applying. I also want to thank all the residents who provided their input on the weeds and grass ordinance and worked with staff and have come to these meetings and have voiced their opinions. I know that many times it seems burdensome to come in the evenings, but I think it's so important to have your voices heard, and so I just want to commend you on all of the hard work and pursuing interests that are near and dear to your heart. And last but not least, we have our first Region 14 meeting tomorrow, so, of the year, so I should have an update to provide at the next meeting. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I would echo what's been already mentioned. Road crews, very, very challenging, but very, very important role that they play, and they worked very, very hard to try to keep our citizen streets clean and safe as they could during this winter episode that we've had. Also, special thanks to the applicants, as already been mentioned. Appreciate their time and effort, and look forward to probably seeing many, many of them coming back again and, and looking at these different positions. Want to mention that February the 27th, 9 to 1 Senior Citizen Center, there's a breakfast buffet drive-through for the Day of Caring. So we used to have a breakfast on Sunday, but this year, they're going to have a drive-through on the 27th from 9 to 1. They're calling it a breakfast brunch. So again, the proceeds are for the homeless. It's done every year in many, many churches throughout the area, so I'd encourage our citizens, stop by if you can between 9 and 1 on the 27th and have a breakfast brunch. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. So the only thing I'll add is that we have an upcoming graduation from the Police Academy this Wednesday, so I think the exams may still be pending, but we do have a few, we do have a few coming out of that class, so at least two, maybe three, yeah, two officers that we're hoping pass and come out first morning, so that'll be much appreciated and welcomed for our Police Department, so. Good luck to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon, is the snow over, I hope? Who knows? I do want to, please pass along the thanks to your crews out there. They've done an outstanding job keeping our streets
Excellent.
Clear quickly, so it's, it's, I know it's appreciated because I get comments about it a lot now, and they're positive comments. It's not the negative ones that I used to hear a few years ago, so thank you for that. I want to also thank all the applicants to our boards and commissions. It's really gratifying to see a lot of people step up, want to be a part of the city and work with our city. And I also want to thank the residents that show up, not just to this meeting, but other meetings too, to have your voices heard, because we have to make decisions up here, and having input from our citizens on what they want and what is best for the city is really important to us because we live here too. It's all about making it a good place for all of us to live. I was honored to attend the Tecumseh Council Scouts of America Eagle Presentation yesterday. We had 10 scouts from Beaver Creek that received their eagle, which, for most of you, some of you, I know you've had an eagle for 60 or 70 years. Not quite that long.
Still carry it around, Your Honor.
I know you do. But that's quite an accomplishment. In two weeks, I'm honored to go downtown to the Gold Awards for the Girl Scouts. And not to throw any shade at the Boy Scouts, but I have understood that earning the Gold Award for the Girl Scouts is harder than earning an Eagle Scout, so I look forward to the, there's about five girls from Beaver Creek that will be receiving their gold, so. And that's all I have. Mr. Landr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly tonight, coming up, community conversations with City Council. This is, we started last year, so we're continuing three times this year. The first will be coming up, March 12th, 9 to 10 a.m. at Lefino Plaza, 3868 Dayton Xenia Road. So this is a time, a small group, you can come and meet, usually two to three City Council members, can, you share your ideas, learn, ask questions, and just have those more intimate questions with City Council members. Therapy Fair Plan Feedback. The city's collecting the feedback again for the plan draft. We had an open house just the other week that was very well-attended. Randy did not get to eat all the cookies by himself, so it was well-attended, and thank you all for coming and providing those feedback. But we still have feedback that is open for a period of time by March 7th, and planning@beavercreekohio.gov is the email that you can send that to. You can always call as well. But the plan serves to identify the location and type of roadways needed to support the projected growth and to make efficient use of infrastructure, road functions, and funding. The plan's updated every five years, so this is now at the time. Veterans Program, I did not check. Did we check to see how many we have left today?
10 or 11 left.
10 or 11 left of these applications, so we're due by March 31st, so we have another month. Those should fill up, but please get your veteran to honor them up on these flags. It was a great program, up on these poles on me, and, but limited time, so please come first, first come, first served, and they're up through Memorial Day through Veterans Day, so it's an awesome way of honoring a veteran. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for citizen comments. Anyone would like to address council on any subject, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
I'm James, and I'm 3638 Cedarwood Lane, and I'd like to cede my one minute to Seth Wagman.
Okay.
I'm Seth Wagman. I live at 2782 Bagwoods Trail, in Beaver Creek, obviously. I'm here tonight to readdress a matter I brought up many months ago to you. Many of you probably don't even remember it, but I'm here to make it easy on you this time. The matter is to request that you endorse the Convention of States movement. The three pillars of the movement are to bring the federal government back under the control of the states and the people, specifically by imposing things, specific things on them. Term limits for federal officials, including members of Congress, is one of the three pillars. Imposing fiscal restraints is another one, and then restricting or limiting the power and jurisdiction of the federal government is the third pillar of this movement. You may have heard of this. It's being, you know, debated in the House, in the Senate of the, mostly in the House for the past few legislatures. This time, it is in the Senate and the House of the Ohio Legislature. It's been introduced in both houses. We're pretty confident that it can pass or get out of committee this time, but it has never made it out of committee, unfortunately, in the House. And so what we're trying to do this General Assembly is we're trying to ask bodies such as yourselves to influence the legislators that come from this part of the state, to show them that you're behind this movement. And I'm willing to answer any questions. I would ask if you would mind, you know, if you have a lot of questions after I email the packet of information to, you know, your point of contact, if you have questions. I would love to be on the regular agenda, you know, when you, when you vote on this or when you discuss this. It would be a non-binding resolution, simply expressing support, asking the Ohio Legislature to vote this out, you know, to put this up for a vote and to pass it. And what it does, through Article 5 of the U.S. Constitution, it applies to Congress for a convention to propose amendments to the Constitution, which is the other way that amendments can be proposed, other than waiting for Congress to do it. The type of topics that I just showed you as the three pillars of our movement are not things that Congress is likely to propose at this time, based, in my opinion, and based on historical, you know, observations, because these are putting restrictions on the power of the federal government. So I'm just continuing for another three minutes.
Yeah.
That's fine. And so it's more likely that those will be passed by, or sorry, proposed by the states. The process would work as follows. You get 34 states, which is 2/3 of the states, to call for this convention on, you know, on the same topics, the same set of topics. Once that happens, Congress calls the convention. The convention will meet initially to decide, you know, how they want to operate, but this convention doesn't adjourn until their business is done. There's other interstate conventions that are continuing to work because their business is not done, such as the Carr and the River Commission. It's a fantastic example of interstate cooperation, and this convention would be one of those things. But once its business is done, and they have hopefully some amendments proposed, those amendments go back to Congress, and Congress then decides how they'll be ratified by the states. Be ratified just like any other amendment by the states, and so it takes three states to ratify in whatever method Congress decides. And so it's, I just appreciate everything that I've watched here tonight. The fact that I can come and talk to you without an appointment, without going through your aides, is so wonderful. If these kind of amendments were proposed and hopefully passed, there would be so much more power and jurisdiction brought back to the states, and so much money that would not be flowing out of the states. It would be in our state, and we would be able to use it. I think that we would be able to use it more effectively, and we would be, you know, the government at the, at the lower levels is the most responsive. I really appreciate everything that you all do for us, using our tax, you know, money. The fact that you are, you have to have fiscal responsibility, you have to stay within your budget. Your activities don't make my money inflated in value. I love local and state governments because of those things, and so I want to bring that power back from the federal government to where I think it belongs. And so after this, I will email one of your clerical staff a packet of information. It makes it super easy to, for you to decide whether you're willing to do this, and if you're willing to have us back for a question and answer session, we would love to come. So that's all I have to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Sale of Property at Competitive Bidding or the Sale or Other Disposition of Unneeded, Obsolete, or Unfit-for-Use Property.
I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes, and there will be no business coming out of this, so effectively, we're, the meeting is adjourned. We'll have to come back and adjourn it, but there will be no more action taken. We are in executive session.